Hello, Ian.
All righty. What the heck is this? We have two different things?
Uh, probably one was up.
I think it's the same exact thing, just kind of twice.
Is it the same?
Looks to be, appears to be, yeah. Wow.
One has the bigger font. Good for you.
Is it a David font?
Oh! I just got it.
What are you doing with this stuff?
Anytime you're ready, we can do a quick search.
What?
You're up first.
Just move it along.
Oh, I'm a first. I'm sorry.
Um, I'm gonna call Public Service and Utilities to order Mr. Wallens' first stop.
Multi?
Multi-modal. Let's hear about this.
About any of those things.
Do we have a micro program?
Wow, okay.
We did that video. We asked that you'll use it too.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Don't start doing curio pieces.
There's no speakers in here, so this just works.
Correct.
So, what we have in front of us is the multimodal improvements. We're calling this multimodal, but it's actually two federal aid projects of similar scope that we decided to bid together. Um, the two projects that are part of this award are the Safeway School Project, McLawland's Zoller School, and the Central Park Vale Trail Connector. So both projects are within a, I would say, similar area, um, connected by McLawland, and they are both Charlotte versus sidewalk projects. So we bundled these projects together to get a better value out of it. We received two bids, one from Cowan Inn, one from Luisee, uh, the lower being Cowan Inn. Uh, our consultant has reviewed the bids. He's found the numbers are within the engineer's estimate. Um, he's working on putting a letter together for it. Uh, however, we're still in that process. This is, um, the first phase of this. I mean, not phase, uh, the first step. We still need to have DOT sign off on this. However, we can two run the things parallel as, uh, they're gonna take this and they're gonna review it as well, apparently. So nothing is signed until we have concurrents from DOT.
Chris, this doesn't require Amtrak either, right?
No, there's no Amtrak required.
Nice plug there.
Thank you. Any questions? Other questions?
And I'll just say, we are looking to award, uh, one alternate. The one alternate would, um, turn, uh, tint the sidewalk that darker gray. Um, that was something that was done prior to me, about seven years ago. You noticed it on Bradley. We have two sidewalks, one is a very dark gray, and then it kind of ends to designate in that area of the trail and the sidewalk. So in this area, we put an alternate in to make the rest of the sidewalk dark gray so that you can kind of see it. Um, the other thing that's gonna be a little bit different about this is that this particular section of sidewalk is gonna be maintained by the city. I know that we usually say, not maintain, but if there's a break in it, if there is a, so not snow load, not that kind of maintain, but the repair of it, because it's actually in this particular section down Bradley and then down McLawland into there. It's eight feet wide. It's made up different. It's colored concrete, so it'll become part of our annual kind of, you know, looking at it recap. So it's a little bit different. So if you hear from any of your constituents who said, you know, "I don't want this in my front yard. It's more for me. It's more of this." It's, we are going to act like it's actually a trail and do somewhere else, like we would in the park. It's part of a trail.
But they will be resupplied, I'm sorry.
Yes.
They will be resupplied. We'll be clearing the snow off. And I assume we have some sort of court bond that's gonna make that clear?
To the homeowners?
People who, uh...
Yeah, we've talked about it in our meetings, but we'll go forward. I mean, we're not looking to do this now. This is a project for the spring, so we'll, we'll get that out there a little bit more clear.
So, and you'll send notifications?
What?
Anything else?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anything else to come before, um...
I have a question for Chris before he leaves. No, let's, let's undo the break. Gilderlin Avenue. Now, if I might correct, if you can understand, we're not gonna, that we're not, it's not gonna get paid this year?
Not this year. They're going everything up to binder.
But what can we do then? Okay, so they're gonna get to the binder?
Everything's gonna be restored up National Grid responsibly.
Cause I'm getting tons of complaints about the condition of it.
It's terrifying, isn't it?
A lot. It's really bad.
I have a meeting with them on a week from today. I can email them.
Even their temporary repairs, if they can do a little better job, I'm getting...
Well, the temporary is temporary. You know, with gas, it's a little tricky because they, they leave it in the ground for a couple of weeks while they monitor, and they, they don't have all the services hooked up, which is another, another thing. Gilderlin is just such a long expanse. I mean, when you're on one end, you can't see the other end of that project. So they're, they're going to be, yeah, they're gonna be soft cutting and bringing everything up to binder, and then next year we have our pavement preservation program, which we're going to be replacing the signal at Broadway in Gilderlin. Doing a little intersection work. We're replacing the signal at Broadway and Beeter, finally putting crosswalks and some pedestrian accommodations down there, and then we're milling and paving the, the street in its entirety.
So that'll be, that'll get done in 18?
Yeah, we haven't, we already have a design. It's queued up. We just, we were kicked for a federal constraint. Um, we had, there wasn't enough money, so we, it got pushed out. So the plans are already, we're just gonna bid it right in the winter, and it's gonna be a fall first thing. So, and then National Grid is moving after Gilderlin. They're moving downtown. So you're going to see National Grid between State Street and Beeter on Broadway sooner than later, so in the next probably two weeks.
Continue to make my drive to work fun, the amount of service issues we've had, water service issues we've had since we did...
Some lady on Broad Street, she was, due to that, who knows, she lost her water service, you know, her lateral.
Oh, and it's gushing water.
Yeah. Real close to Gilderlin, you know?
National Grid complains over that because the city, we don't mark laterals. Laterals are private. We do not, UFPL would mark them out. So when they're digging for their gas mains, they, I'm not gonna say all the time, but they frequently will nick a water service because one inch, not the easiest thing to look at.
The fine, right.
Anything else for Mr. Wallen while we help him on Hudson? Second?
Second.
And we'll go to Public Service and Utilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, call to order Health and Recreation. Two items on the agenda. The first is review for public hearing regarding smoking near Public Development. Ma'am, a pardon.
Been legislations being prepared via council Wednesday.
By Wednesday, the latest, it'll be through the county clerk's office, read through the first draft bid today. So we're pretty close.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Policy on the city of here called smoking.
None. We have a few.
Yep.
We have a few.
Any other questions?
So, how is that different?
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is ceremonial resolution for National Grid Cancer Month, which is October. Uh, want to be able to, you know, do a resolution for this. We're, we're all aware of it, but to actually recognize and continue to keep up the awareness. So, are there any questions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else to come before Health and Recreation? If not, can you state a motion?
I will second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
You wanna share it or something?
All right, I'm gonna call to order Finance, just to review that we have a public hearing on Tuesday, uh, for the budget. So nothing needs to be done for that. And moving on to the Board of Analysis, reappointment. Uh, the mayor put forth two candidates just for informational purposes. I happened to be in discussion with the chair of the planning commission, so I sent that along just so everybody could have all the information not to, uh...
Wait a minute, planning commission or board of assessment?
Assembly.
Assessment.
Board of Assessment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm ju- jumping ahead of myself. This is, uh, Mr. Williams' Board of Assessment Review reappointment. Pardon me?
Correct.
Um, and that is put forth by the county, and that is in here, right?
Yes.
Letter from the county.
It's a council vote.
Yep, council appointment is just a reappointment. So does anybody have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, what I said, what I just said. Uh, the mayor put forth two appointments
with resumes. They're in your packet. Uh, I just forwarded you the others so that you have the information, all the information.
It's on a different...
It's under City Development and Planning.
What the heck?
What are you doing there?
Yeah, you should be on the bucket list.
I'm just excited to talk about it.
I guess you are. You're jumping here, lady. You're jumping.
Wow, it's Monday and I'm feeling all perky.
All right.
Let's actually cut, let's, let's follow the agenda.
Let's call Finance back to work.
Let's actually follow the agenda. Um, okay, on to budget reappropriation for the law department. My apologies.
This will be a budget reappropriation, taking our litigation paralegal position and changing it to a confidential secretary of corporation counsel. Our litigation paralegal recently moved down to the city clerk's office, as you know. Um, we had a lot of trouble filling this position last time when we had heard, uh, I think it was two or three years ago. Um, so what would be easier on our end, or I think makes more sense given the nature of the duties, is to make it a confidential secretary position. Uh, I'd request right now to leave the budget the same as it is. I don't anticipate that it would be filled at that same level, but it would give us some flexibility to move forward.
And I haven't reviewed it yet. What is the proposed 2018 budget as far as that position goes?
It's been cut down a little. I think it's forty thousand, down from forty-four in the 2017 budget, which, um, would yield to work within, if public stuff coming under.
But do we have the position listed as county central secretary in the new budget?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. That's, that's who it's saying.
Okay.
No, it's not. It's still paralegal.
So that adjustment can be...
And it does say forty thousand, eighty-six.
So, yeah, amount adjusted, but not the...
But the title. He wants the title changed. Is that correct?
Right. Well, that title changes for this year, and then we can make the appropriate adjustments for 2018. Questions, Ms. Portfield?
Does this have to go through civil service?
It does, yes. Right now, I'm working on the job spec that we can bring to the civil service meeting, assuming the council is favorable, uh, in this law.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Second.
Second by Mr. McBarren. All those in favor?
I'm a third.
Now, let's discuss the planning commission. No, not really. Okay, discussion of Tabernacle Baptist Church. Is that an executive session item because, or is that...
It wouldn't be executive session. We're just talking about the interest and the penalties on the, uh...
Yep. So this came before us, I think, several months ago at this point, and Rachel, do you wanna fill us in on Tabernacle Baptist again, or are they just giving an overview? Yep, so they had outstanding fees that they were not aware of, that their bookkeeper was not making payment on. Um, and because those fees obviously weren't paid, interest started to accrue, so they couldn't afford to pay the actual fees. Uh, they're not asking for forgiveness on those that we certainly agree to, but they're asking for forgiveness on the interest that has compounded on fees owed to the city. And I believe that they are in a position to pay off the back fees in full and move forward. So, um, the first time we discussed it, the council really was not supportive of that. We were dealing with another issue at the same time. It's come back around through email and a last plea, um, from the church. It's my understanding that, uh, they can't afford to pay the full amount. They would have to shutter the, shutter the church if that were the case. Going forward, Ms. McBarren.
So they're going to pay the sewer, the water, and the trash actual fees current?
Yeah.
And the only thing that we're looking to do is, is give them a pass on the, on the interest and penalty?
Yeah.
And do we have a dollar number on that?
We did in the, it's in the email that he sent us.
Okay.
It's a couple thousand dollars. I mean, it's not huge.
I checked my bracket for before the meeting, and as of May, it was ten thousand dollars approximately, with forty-one hundred being the interest and the penalties.
And then, and then the ten thousand is the total amount, right?
Total, yeah.
From what they owe and the interest. So they would be willing to pay the fifty-nine hundred in fees, and the forty-one hundred in interest is what they're asking for forgiveness on. Other questions, Ms. Portfield?
Since they became aware of this, are, they've, they've been keeping up with their taxes?
He's been regularly working with Mr. Waterfield, tried to rectify the situation, and then, yes, the bookkeeper has admitted her negligence and is no longer in the position, and they have different processes in place now to keep her... Any other questions, any concerns? Is there anyone who doesn't feel comfortable moving forward with this?
My feet are hot enough now. I don't wanna foreclose on the church.
Mr. Riggy has personal issues involved?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. McBarren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, and that motion was to forgive, because this was actually a discussion.
Motion is to forgive the interest and penalties on the actual fees, um, with the understanding that the fees will be paid in full. Okay, is there anything else to come before Finance this evening?
Second.
Second by Mr. McBarren. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's move forward with the committee on City Development and Planning, and here's our planning commission, the two appointments.
I'm dying to talk about this.
No, you are. Well, don't die yet, because we're on video here. Mr. Mayor, you wanna discuss your, your two appointments here, and then we'll go to Ms. Brazel. How's that?
It's two vacancies. I've submitted two individuals to the council for your consideration, and I would look forward to your favorable low review.
All right, plain simple, right to the point. Ms. Brazel?
It's just, you know, as I rehabbed before, I had been already talking with the chair because they were having a hard time getting a forum, so I tried to help things along. So she did forward me her recommendations, but I, you know, I don't have any preference to who the positions are filled with. Just wanted to make sure we share all the information that's brought forward. I know that she was concerned that she's missing some specific skill sets on the commission right now. Um, and so one of the people that she put forward had some specialization in the skill sets that she needs, but...
Any other questions? All right, need a motion to move?
Second. So we're moving all two together?
Both. Yes, both. Yep. Uh, moved by Ms. Portfield. Second by Mr. McBarren. All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you. And, uh, discussion on the moratorium and convenience stores. Ms. Brazel?
Mr. Lee is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where?
What did you say? Mr. Lee was here.
Well, come, come. Well, congratulations, sir. Hi, do you know you and other council members?
Thank you guys very much.
Very good. Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
All righty.
So the clerk had shared with us some legislation from Albany that they asked to investigate, look at. Mr. Kozier and I also sat down with, um, Judy Raitmeier from the Tobacco Free Coalition. Um, and, you know, after we complete looking at the municipal smoking issue, we would be looking to, um, suggest some restrictions going forward on how close tobacco is sold, uh, in proximity to schools, any existing businesses, of course, would be grandfathered in. So it's kind of a dual issue at this point. Um, and also limiting, uh, one of the considerations in going forward as opposed to putting a moratorium in place would be to limit the number of, um, convenience stores in the city that can sell tobacco, which also may act as a deterrent, um, to, to all of these stores popping up in neighborhoods if they can't, uh, get the revenue from the actual tobacco sales. It might also help determine, you know, quickly if somebody's selling Lucy's and they don't sell tobacco, that there's a major issue at hand, like a double issue at hand now. So just opening the discussion up for thoughts people had after they reviewed Albany's legislation, whether we wanna hold just a minute and look at tobacco as part of a package deal, what people's thoughts were.
Yeah, I just followed with Ms. Brazel again. I, I think that's kind of what we're leaning towards, too, is taking this, working together. Um, and of course, Judy Raitmeier gave us tons of information. We'll make sure that we get it all out to everybody, and they had sample legislation as well for us to work off of. Um, but I think it's, it's a good topic for discussion, um, you know, amongst the council, and of course, get the mayor and, uh, council or, uh, law office involved as well. So, uh, they'd be willing to come and speak with us, um, as well, and we've had it here in a couple of presentations, I know, in the past. Um, but I think it's good discussion, and, uh, as we said, I think we can do to deter, you know, the tobacco sales, especially near our kids, near the schools and daycares, I think is very important, and, uh, the continuing problem that we have with convenience stores.
I just followed, I mean, on the subject, I found, I was talking to my neighbor today because he had a problem. He had quit smoking. He was spending a hundred and forty dollars a week.
A week?
Wow!
Oh, my gosh.
He said, "Where's your new Cadillac? Can it be parked?" No.
Wow.
A hundred and forty dollars a week. A habit that's, you know, can be expensive on having that.
Unless anybody has any differing opinions, we also thought it might be best to just do the municipal part first and then delve into the southern part, so that we're kind of mixing all the information together.
Yep, Ms. Portfield.
So, uh, do you have, like, a timeframe that we're talking about in terms of trying to get it all done? Um, just, because my concern really is about, um, more convenience stores coming online as we go through this process, because, of course, people are going to be aware that we're discussing perhaps a moratorium or, or limiting the number of stores. So, you know, if we, if we, it takes a long period of time, and I don't know what that period of time is, um, you know, it, we could be still having to deal with more stores than we intended to. So have we talked about a timeframe in which you really wanna make sure that we get this all nailed down?
If you wanna put it on in two weeks, can we just get it rolling at least?
Well, let me ask a question. I know that in the past, you've said that in order for us to put a moratorium in place, there has to be a reason, right? There has to be a justification. So is the fact that we're now looking at this issue and looking to change the code and limit the number of convenience stores just cause to put a moratorium in place until we can flesh out the legislation?
If the council were to make a determination that there's a significant problem with these stores selling close to schools, it, the issue is, you wanna be able to point to a problem we have now that we wanna stop from getting worse by having this moratorium. So just looking into something to determine if there's a problem, I would recommend that not be the basis, but if you really think there is, and there's some facts you can point to, then that would, uh, withstand scrutiny.
So the, you know, the violence around some of the, um, smaller storefronts and that, that isn't just cause to say, "There's a problem here, and we need to look into limiting the number of tobacco sellers and, and small, you know, convenience stores in our neighborhoods." I'm just asking, I'm just trying to find a way.
Yeah, if you have figures about the amount of violence around the stores, um, that could be enough, depending on what those figures are. What I'm familiar with right now is that there are some problems, and I just haven't seen something comprehensive enough that has jumped out at me. But...
To put the moratorium back in place. Ms. Portfield, you have a question?
So we could, we could think that as a number of police calls to those, um, addresses, is that something that, you know, would be considered? And also, and I don't know if there's anything that concrete about this, but selling Lucy's is a huge, um, part of what goes on at some of these stores, not all, at some of them. I've actually witnessed it personally, so it's not that someone told me. Um, so, uh, is that something that we could, you know, I, I don't know if anybody's ever been brought, um, brought to court regarding that. I know that, this was a while ago, somebody got their, they were selling cigarettes that didn't have the state seal, so...
Actually, selling Lucy's is what led to the downfall of Chubbies, because they did this thing there. We got some information out of them. We'll use it in prosecution here. So they do enforce that, but it's enforced at the county law.
As I just wrote down, see, and contacted county, see if, are they sharing those, um, names and numbers with you of, of the stores that they're citing for violations?
Yeah, we do have pretty good communication with them.
That's what I thought, because I thought at one point we weren't, but now I thought we were again. So, um, yeah, because they do these things every week, um, and they hire some of our teenagers that actually go, um, and solicit, not just one zip, but the entire county. Um, but as long as they're sharing that information with, with you, so you kind of know who's being cited and who's not being cited.
If we...
So, you know, maybe we can find out what those numbers are. I can give them a shot. Oh, I'm not here in the next two days. But Thursday, I'll shoot an email, uh, and see if I can get those numbers for you. All right?
Yeah, if we, if we could look at those kind of things and at least, um, talk about having a moratorium until we figure out what, you know, the landscape's gonna look like in terms of the number of stores, et cetera. I think that's very important.
All right.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
So you had suggested two weeks, and I'm perfectly liable to that, but we had talked about how to clear, clear this away from the others.
All the budgets who...
And we, well, we have the, um, public hearing, uh, coming up on Tuesday, so it would actually be on the agenda for discussion, the municipal building part, in two weeks. So do you wanna hold it until the next cycle? And this is a question to the council. Um, do you wanna hold it until the next cycle, or do you wanna just tackle both issues at the same time? Seems to be a...
Well, my understanding is that you wanted to do it as a comprehensive, the, um, talk about smoking around the stores and selling, et cetera, and the moratorium. Can't, we can't just separate that, create the moratorium, and then go on to doing all the other stuff because we don't have to discuss all the other, um, around schools, et cetera. We could just go move forward with the moratorium. I don't think that would cause a lot of confusion.
We can if we can actually come up with the information to support it.
Right. Yes, if we can come up with, yes. So if we can come with the information, I'd say that we move on on that.
Well, that, yeah, that we can put on, yeah, that's fine. I just don't, we just don't know if we can yet. So...
Okay.
I guess we'll just, for now, leave it up in the air.
Right.
Pending the information Mr. Kozier gets from the county.
Yep, and I'll, I'll get that to Chuck on Thursday and share all that.
Okay.
All right. All righty. Uh, and number three, uh, the Broadway and Harrison lots in Luisee's. Is this the letter from Jackie Hurd? Is that what we're talking about, uh, the property on, um, twenty-four eighteen Broadway? And, um, sign on Ms. Brazel, Mr. Riggy, whoever, what do you two? Go ahead, yeah.
This has been ongoing for most of the summer, and everyone was under the impression that this person was gonna open a small retail car lot and use the front off, the front space that was the carpet store for his showroom and his office. Well, it's been anything but, uh, basically. It's a salvage yard is what it is. It is what it is. There's buses parked there. Some of the buses are gone. It's cleaning up a little bit, but there's still two buses on the right side of this building in the driveway, and there was a Cadillac in there, a Beeter Cadillac, and then it wound up getting stripped at some point. There was no doors, no motor, no transmission, sitting out there almost on the sidewalk, oil all over the place, a mess. That finally got removed, but there's still...
It was outside.
It was outside. No, it was outside. I sent pictures, if you have pictures. I sent pictures showing that. But the bottom line is, it's anything but a retail car lot. So I guess Jackie's question, which is a good one, is what happens when somebody presents to the BCA, "This is what they're gonna do," and then when they don't follow through on it, what can we do? What, what can we do as far as it's anything but a used or retail car lot? He does have a sign there from DMV. I didn't check that out to see if it's a legitimate sign or not, but he does have that for auto repair and for a retail car lot. But it's a salvage yard, because there's a FedEx truck. It's full of junk. There's a refrigerated truck, trailer on there that's, just sits there. You know, it's just sitting there, and it doesn't look good. So, and there's one bus on, on that Harrison Street side, and there's two buses on the right side of the building. right side of the building. So...
And the common environmental matters.
Yeah.
Do we have any recourse?
Well, we've been there a number of times this summer. Our zoning officer, one of the first things he did when he started was look into this issue. He sent a number of violations. He was actually there today following up on the violations. And the appearance ticket is going to be going out either tomorrow or the day after for two violations that haven't been complied with. They have complied with a couple of the things.
Sidewalk's done, which is good. Sidewalk and curbing.
I know I sent in some stuff, and so it's good that they're following up, but it's still a mess.
Yeah. So this problem goes back, you know, to last year when the ZDA gave him a variance on the property, so we're looking to...
What is our recourse if that variance isn't followed? If it's anything but a retail car lot eventually? I don't know how much time we give them, but when that doesn't happen and something else is there that isn't in zoning, you know? But what the variance was agreed to.
So it can be used for anything that the property's zoned for or what the variance allows for. So if it's for something outside of that, we can give them a zoning violation and bring them into court and make them comply with applicable laws.
It's been ongoing for a long time. I know John was aside going, I did too, and we've been working with Avi with this, but there really hasn't been much movement, you know? Gone all summer.
One of those things where you go, you have to write notice of violation, you give them 30 days to comply, and then after that, you can do the appearance ticket. And they showed some good faith in the beginning, and then...
But doesn't he have a car there too? Like, so he's a strip, a strip car lot, so he's got like one car, so he's...
It doesn't look like it's a car for sale. I certainly...
Does that strip Cadillac?
It's on the other side though, but...
Strip Cadillac.
What, was this taken in the morning and this in the afternoon? Because the doors are on that.
That's after they stripped it. That's the second picture. But, I mean, there's one car on the lot, but I wouldn't say it's there for sale. Anybody else that has cars for sale, they have something on the windshield, you know, so it's just a car with no plates on it is what it is. It looks like an abandoned car.
And I think he's just, they can call the position a convenience, trying to convolute the process, the system. How do we, going to take an ongoing effort to continually cite them, to get compliance? So keep chipping away at it. Frustrating for everybody and for the adjacent property owners. It's just...
Well, I guess the thing is, I guess my big question is, we can cite them. Can't we pull those, the bus and the refrigerated truck and the FedEx truck off that lot that doesn't belong there? It's junk. It's what it is. In plain English, it's junk is what's on there. It's unregistered. I think Kevin went there and cited them too, I believe.
It's his property though, right? Or their property?
It's his property.
I don't know if they bought it or not, or if they're leasing it. I don't know if they bought it and those owners.
What are the violations they received? It's for hazardous storage of an unregistered vehicle. So hit them with a couple accounts for that. What I'd recommend in this situation, instead of trying to see if we can go do it ourselves, we get them to come to court, we give them violations and see if we can get them to self-correct, and then we'll impose whatever penalty feels fair.
Because it was, quite honestly, there was one email I saw a month and a half or two months ago that said, "They'll be gone by Wednesday. Coller City Auction's going to be here and they're going to auction it off." But that never happened. You know, so it's another one of those promises that just never happened. They're still there. People drive by it and see it every day. I got complaints from the beauty shop, complaints from the insurance, the little insurance agency, you know, and other people complained. But anyhow, all right.
So again, they've been cited recently again? Today, you said they were cited again?
Today was the follow-up for the 30 days after the violation that went out in September.
Okay.
So in September, we felt that we were in a good position. Everything had been issued that we can issue. They checked. There's been a little progress over there, but not everything. So the next step is going to be court.
When did they initially purchase the property?
Last summer, because the variance was granted before the transaction took place, so it's been sometime after June 1st, 2016.
I guess just one more question on that then. Doesn't it come into... Isn't part of it, can it be, you can only have one unregistered car on your property, correct, by city code?
I think that's private ownership.
Private ownership.
This is supposed to be a business.
It's supposed to be a car.
Yeah, but it isn't. I mean, that's the thing. It isn't. If I had a bunch of used cars there, I'd say, okay, even if they look like heck, you know? They're junk is what it is. It's a salvage yard. I've been around them all my life, so I know what they are. Anyhow.
Ms. Brazel, you going to comment or no?
Well, I was just going to say, and I agree, but like a used car lot, everything isn't licensed and put temporary plates on. So is there a loophole there that they're getting away with being able to have unlicensed cars on the lot?
But I don't know. With that retail car lot sales, I don't think he could, he's allowed to sell anything like that.
Yeah.
I don't, through DMV, I don't believe so. Yeah. I don't believe so. So...
All right. You keep this on your radar for us, if you don't mind, your office?
Definitely.
All right. Just keep us in the loop as this thing moves forward. I think it's very important to us. And again, it's a main thoroughfare right in the city. And I think that's the other piece as well, so...
That's the big...
Right?
Big thing in Bellevue, yes.
Right. It's right there. Yep. All right. Thank you, Mr. Altico. Appreciate that. So item number four, ceremonial resolution. Honorary, honoring Albert P. Calafano will be celebrating his 100th birthday. And that's Mr. Riggi.
Yeah.
Their party, or they come in here?
Yes, sir. There is. On the 21st, I believe, there's going to be a mass at Mount Carmel Church, and afterwards we're going to have, the Holy Name Society's going to have a little party for him. I hope it's not too big a party for Mr. Calafano. Just so you know, at the Veterans, his son is the chaplain that some of the Veterans think, John Calafano. So anyhow, he grew up educated and everything. Right now, he lives in Rotterdam. I think because of his age, he's living with his son, but he's been, and is connected most of his life. He brought up his family on Hewitt Street. And, I mean, it's quite a milestone, and he's done a lot. I did get, I think, attach an outline of some of the things that he did. And he did it after he retired. The thing that got me was he was a limousine driver, and he drove Jack Walsh and the Grateful Dead.
At the same time?
No, I hope not. I hope not.
That would explain some things.
Yeah. It's quite a thing, so I appreciate support for that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And then another one, Mr. Riggi, the October Italian Heritage Month. You have some folks coming down for that as well?
No.
All right. Very good.
He might be. I'm sorry.
No, the Italian Heritage.
No, we're just, he may be. He may be, because he did residence, so he may be in Glendale now, because he is a wheelchair bound.
I know the son had told me that.
Okay. Okay. So it may be.
Doesn't mean...
But he can't come to the chambers for the, it's hard for him, so it's going to be presented.
Definitely.
Present anybody's, well, welcome to come. It's on October 21st. I'll send the information around.
Very good. All right. And now the Italian Heritage Month, you going to present that?
Yeah. That's normal. We have every year.
Very good.
I think Laura Scalise has the, I think it's set up out here. I didn't come in through there.
Yes.
Yes, it's out there, yep.
It is out there. Appreciate support for that.
All righty. And moved by Ms. Portfield. Second by Mr. Motivaren. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I think we can do number six, correct? Property sales review? We can do that? Or is that executive session?
That's the exception on our paperwork.
It is or isn't?
It's exactly the exception.
Well...
Well, this is the summary.
This is the summary, right.
This is the one that's installed there.
It's a property.
I think this is good stuff, actually. I think this is stuff we'd like to share about what's been going on with the homes program and the sales and what you can bring in and the income and how we're right on target with what our budget was for last year, right?
Yes.
Can be about 1.7 again? 1.6?
1.7 and $1 would be all right.
That's Paul Manning's $1 he put in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just to recap, in 2015, we did 1.6 million. In 2016, it was 1.8 million. And then for the year into 2017, we're at 1.2 million right now with 60 free sales. So we are on par to meet our budget, probably a little bit more than that. Then going to, after the sold property, everybody, including the past year, has done their permits, pulled their permits, and looks like to me everybody's, you know, either completed or done their work in progress. These do include a few community builders, which obviously those were part of the bigger project there. And then going forward, the sale pending, we have about $480,000 in sales pending, which we have no problem closing those out and then sell by the end of the year. And then those, I just attached after that, an explanation of where we're at with each of those, some of whom are a little bit older. But, I mean, I'm in town with everybody and everything's still, any time here, it's still Then city open, not used from those issues. This is just stuff that has title issues that came off when we went to close, either people would need another judgment, and we have to move forward, getting somebody else on the court, stuff like that. So I attached an explanation there too. And then after that is stuff we have listed right now currently, and then our, you know, our list of the lots. We have the work in progress, trying to get that down.
There's a lot of information here, so if people look through it, have questions, feel free to shoot, write it on an email or give a call for any problem or information that you need.
I just think it's excellent, especially with the, you know, the homes program as well, you know, that we've been ahead of our budgeted projections the last two years. This looks like our third consecutive year we'll be ahead of our revenues in anticipation for 2018. I just think it's wonderful to see that revenue coming again and again, getting those, you know, the homes occupied and back on the tax rolls. And I think that's really been a goal of the entire council and the office as well.
Really, that 367 12th Street, I don't know if you've been by there yet, that little house? What an amazing job they did.
Unbelievable, right?
Beautiful. They put stamped concrete in. It's, it's...
Wow.
It's beautiful. It really is. And that was a piece of junk, quite honestly.
Good to see.
So I'm glad Cito's bought the house next door too, if he does the same thing, it'll be two nice houses in the road.
Ms. Brazel, you have a question?
Yep. So the properties that are listed right now, is that the total on page 3 of what the property? It kind of doesn't look like a dollar.
The number of properties listed, yeah, 65.
No, no, no. The dollar amount total, my apologies, on the other side, does it look like...
I'd have to go through, but I imagine so. That's the total of their half year.
Yeah. Right. Right. Okay. Can you just verify that at some point?
Yeah, no problem. But I'm...
And then my other question was, what does the, like, foreclosure list look like going forward into 2018? I mean, obviously, at some point, it's going to level off or, you know, or decrease. Do we know what's coming down the pike?
This year and next year will level off. Remember, we've been still running some of the ATF stuff. We know about 100 going in the next year.
100.
Put your hand up, or is that...
And what do we see as far as, like, and you may not be able to answer this, I apologize. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but what do we see as, like, a forecast with a percentage of people that now this city has been very consistent with foreclosure? Do we see a smaller number of percentage of people that aren't paying their taxes?
More redemption and less taking, for sure. I would say that increase tenfold, or at least we started. What happened was there was a lot of years that it wasn't being done, so now, you know, now I think most people are able to redeem, whereas, you know, this is only the year of 2019, so they're able to get the money together, whereas, you know...
Right. Right.
Yeah, and I think something I'd like to see when we go through the budget process is really how does that online payment, are folks utilizing that, being able to pay online through the credit and debit cards, and what have we gained on that program? I think I still, I still don't think people realize they can, they can do that online, that we can pay by the credit and debit cards. I don't, everything's in escrow with me, so, but I guess they said they send that now with your tax bills, that you can pay it online, from what I understand?
It's there, it's on the website.
It's on the website and all that? I just think we really got to push that. I just think it's a wonderful opportunity that we're doing. So again, it's relevant, we're bringing in that, probably wouldn't have otherwise. Did somebody else have their hand up?
No. Not me?
No. All right. So any other questions on that? As the mayor said, there's a lot of reading there, a lot of good reading. And again, I really encourage everybody to take a look at all that and just see the good work we've been doing. All right. Thank you very much on that. So the next four items are all going to be in executive session. Or is there anything else to come before us before we go into executive session? All right. Can I just get a motion on executive session? Mr. Motivaren, second by Ms. Portfield. All in favor, say aye? Thank you. We're in executive session. What's it say?